Commission is now called to order at 6:00 PM. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, roll call please.
Commissioner Bonzel?
Here.
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Hanley?
Here.
Commissioner Mayor?
Here.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Here.
Mayor Protem Hill?
Here.
And Mayor Smith?
Here, thank you.
Commissioners, we have an agenda this evening. Do we have a motion on the agenda? Commissioner Davis?
I move we approve the agenda as presented.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Mayor?
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say yes.
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 All opposed, please say no. Motion passes seven zero. I have no announcements this evening. We are now at public comment. Public comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Please state your name and physical address. Do we have anyone for public comment this evening? Go ahead and approach the podium if you'd like to make a comment. Thank you. All right, anyone for public comment? Public comment is now closed. First item on our agenda for the evening, thank you Protem Hill. We have our public hearing on the Budget and General Appropriations Act fiscal year 2022. It will require a roll call vote. City Clerk, could we please have the background?
The City Commission held a budget hearing on August 25th and September 8th. Tonight, a public hearing is scheduled to receive public comment on the proposed fiscal year 2022 budget. Following this input, the Commission should consider any changes it wishes to make to the budget. Fiscal effect, a budget balanced through the use of fund balance has been presented. Recommendation, adopt the fiscal year 2022 Budget and General Appropriations Act. Alternatives is determined by the Commission.
Thank you, Rachel. All right, we will go ahead and have our public hearing. Public hearing is now open. Members of the public wishing to make a comment on this item have three minutes to do so. Please state your name and physical address. Anyone wishing to talk during this public hearing?
Margaret Brum, 404 East Magnetic Street, Marquette, Michigan. I attended all the preliminary budget work sessions. And in looking at the document as presented, I still have questions about the budget. My first question is how much money from the general fund will be required to balance this budget? And I would also like a brief statement on the general fund. I remember seeing a document in 2018, the general fund was above $11 million. And at the end of this budget, I believe it was going to be in single figures. And I never did get a final answer, but I think between five and seven million, and I'd like someone to address that. I'd also like to have someone address whether this budget requires a cut in any city services. I appreciate the numbers are in the budget, but I didn't see any conclusion as to whether any cut in city services would be required to balance the budget. So that's what I'm hoping to hear during the budget discussions. Thank you very much.
Anyone else wishing to speak during the public hearing on the budget? All right, public hearing is now closed. Commissioners, do we have a motion on the fiscal year 22 budget? Commissioner Hanley?
I motion that we adopt the fiscal year 2022 Budget and General Appropriations Act.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Stonehouse?
I second that motion, Your Honor.
Commissioner Hanley, discussion? Commissioner Stonehouse, discussion?
No questions, Your Honor.
Other commissioners, discussion? Commissioner Bonzel?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Sorry, thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I think that overall, our staff have worked very hard. And I'm very grateful for their expertise and their creativity in crafting a budget that, you know, keeps us in the black for the coming fiscal year. And I think most importantly, buys us time going into next fiscal year to, you know, really make some tough decisions and set the city on a sustainable fiscal path moving forward. You know, eventually, the can gets kicked down the road long enough on enough things, it lands in somebody's lap. And, you know, now it's up to us to make sure that we're putting the city on that sustainable path moving forward. So I do plan on voting in favor of the budget. But I had one question about the fee schedule, the city fee schedule. On page 31 of the proposed budget, near the bottom. This is an item that we had discussed in previous budget work sessions and the public budget hearings. So we had a member of the public come to us expressing that, you know, she wanted to organize a a block party in her neighborhood. But when she found out that the fee for doing so was like $250, she was dissuaded from doing so, which I think is understandable. I mean, that's pretty steep for just a little neighborhood block party. Which realistically, probably one person in the neighborhood is gonna have to bear whoever's organizing it. And at the time, there was a typo in the draft budget that said that the cost of providing that service was $125. And we were informed that that was a typo. But in this final proposed budget, I see that the fee for a private street closure for street parties or block parties is still $250, but the cost to provide that service, the break even fee would be 200. And also, it seemed that there was a general sense among most folks on the commission that we would like that fee to go down pretty significantly to try and encourage more block parties to happen in the community. And so I just had a quick question for staff about why that discrepancy exists between the $200 break even cost and the $250 fee that's being proposed? And depending on the answer, I may or may not offer an amendment.
And I'm actually gonna differ over to, I believe, Dennis, who handles these requests. Dennis, not to put you on the spot, but...
Yeah, so the... Referring to is on the engineering fee schedule. And that cost reflects the engineering department cost of it and not the other departments. And I don't have the breakdown for the other departments on it, but that is the way we had filled it out. So it falls under engineering's fee schedule. The permit fee is what it is, but our cost for our department is reflected in that column. So the other costs that go into that permit come from other departments. And I don't know what those are.
So there's other, and just so that we're clear, when we do talk about block parties, there are certain things that do have to be done. There's a little bit extra of patrolling, but then there's also some of the signs that do need to be placed out there and some of that time in order to make that happen and then go forward with the permit process as well.
Yeah, thank you for that information. And I definitely understand that there is a cost to providing that service and allowing these block parties to happen. I just think that it's important to note that our general policy, which is a very good one, of aligning city fees with the actual cost to provide that service is, it's, to my understanding, it's just something we've kind of decided to do. It's not like a written policy per se. And so in specific circumstances like this, where there could be a significant benefit to, you know, changing a fee, I think it's something that we could potentially lower that fee and essentially absorb the additional cost, correct?
If that is certainly something that if the Commission feels so, we will do that.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. And just to clarify, yeah, this is actually, the fee is under the Public Works section of the fee schedule, I think. So I will make a motion to amend, or I would like to amend the motion to reduce the non-community event street closure fee on page 31 from $250 to $100 to make this more financially feasible for city residents to host block parties in their neighborhood.
Do we have a second on Commissioner Bonzel's amendment? Commissioner Davis?
I'm not so sure I want to second it, and maybe I just want some discussion.
Okay, we can have discussion. Okay, Protem has seconded the amendment. And discussion, Commissioner Bonzel, any further discussion on this?
I explained my justification. I'll defer to other folks.
Protem, since you made the second?
For the reasons that Commissioner Bonzel recommended, and I think this has a very specific community purpose. And I think it is a valuable, it's something that we should support beyond the cost. I agree.
Commissioner Davis, any discussion?
Yes, I understand there is also an insurance requirement that goes along with these events. And so I guess I want to make sure that that is the case.
And that's great. Actually, I'm gonna have Suzanne go ahead and speak on the insurance requirement when we talk about using the right of way.
So that is correct. There is an insurance requirement on these. They are using right of way, they're using city property. And basically, that is a requirement so that if something were to happen, party gets out of control, someone gets hurt, the city is not responsible for those activities. And the person throwing the party has insurance to cover that instead.
Okay, and do I understand that it needs to be a million dollar insurance policy?
I don't generally see those permits, so I unfortunately can't speak to what the policy amount is under that. Certain permits come to me for review. Those are not ones that do. So unfortunately, I don't have the answer to that. I don't know if whoever issues those permits might be able to answer that better.
They are generally $1 million.
So do you have an idea of how much an insurance policy for a million dollars would cost a small block party?
If I can tell you, when I did my wedding and I used the lake view, I had to have that same insurance, and it was $100 for one day.
Okay, I was just thinking about the parade insurance, which was much more than that. But that's, okay, so $100 doesn't sound that bad. I guess, you know, I'm wondering if we, just as an option that we might want to consider, is leaving things as they are right now and ask the mayor to direct the staff to consider an option for neighborhood events such as block parties. And I think, you know, our experience with events, large events are wonderful, they're great for the community, and they're great for attracting visitors. But I'm really interested in supporting small neighborhood events. And it's these types of small events that are specific to our residents, not necessarily visitors or large events. And they provide a strong sense of community. And I don't want to forget that we're here to support our city residents and taxpayers. So I'm very much in favor of adjusting that fee and the requirements. I'm just wondering if we need a little bit more study on it.
Valid point, Commissioner Davis. I'm gonna see if, City Manager Karen, do you have any advice on this? The best way to proceed? What would you recommend?
I would like to, I would like to evaluate the situation a little bit more. Because I do think that consulting with our police department and our DPW on these things is important just because of the, possibly the number of events that we would be having and being able to coordinate that. And not saying that we have a higher fee to deter it at all, but it's something that I'd like us to be able to evaluate first.
Protem Hill?
I could certainly see something like, you know, it would have to be on a first come, first served basis in order to not outstretch our resources. So if there was a popular weekend and five blocks wanted to have a party, we may have to limit that or something like that. I mean, I can certainly see that kind of thing being one of the pieces of having to manage these events. And there would be, you know, asking people to take care of their own trash, things like that. I think, I think we can figure it out and hopefully get it ready to go for, you know, as it warms up next year. Does that, do we want to put a timeframe on it, maybe?
We could. That would require another motion. Might need Suzanne's help in a moment to sort out all of the motion and amendments we may have going on. Commissioner Stonehouse, is that your hand raised?
Question from Ms. Stachowicz. How many block parties do we have a year?
I would have to get back to you on that. I don't know that off the top of my head.
In the budget, we budget for two, right? So, yeah.
I mean, I'm just trying to think as a citizen that I don't think I've ever seen one in the city of Marquette.
Just one on my block over here.
So I have no doubt I've missed some, but I don't think this is an overwhelming number of situations we're trying to address. And neither really, frankly, is dropping the fee from 250 down to 100 really going to make any significant difference with what happens or not. I think all of us have to be very aware that there's a cost of city service. There's a cost of bringing out the barriers and recovering them. There's a cost of the police that may be required. There's a cost of the staff actions that may well be involved. And we're sitting here building together a very austere budget, trying to squeeze it from everything we can. And what are we discussing tonight but how to eliminate, squeeze the fee down so we're doing the activity at frankly, a loss? And that doesn't make a lot of sense to me. And I think we're better off keeping what we have and having the citizens understand that there is a cost of doing what you want to do. And that the city certainly should have the courtesy of having that cost repaid by the Citizens Group putting it on. My point, thank you.
Other discussion? Commissioner Bonzel?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I definitely understand the arguments that folks are making about maybe we need to just take a step back and reevaluate this. My question would be, when, I mean, so do we feel that we definitely would be able to get back, you know, to this issue before block parties might start happening when the weather warms up next year? And like, and what would the process be for that, actually? Would we have to do an amendment to the budget to change the fee schedule? Could it be done administratively?
I do believe that we can amend the fee schedule as needed.
We may need a public hearing. I'm not sure how that would work. But as long as we have this wrapped up by April, we should have sufficient time for the summer, right, I would think?
I'd have to double check, but I think the fee schedule is adopted by resolution versus going through the whole process of a public hearing.
Okay.
Similar to the budget amendments, which are done via resolution in some way.
Well, I would be in favor of taking a look at this as a bigger item, like Sally or Commissioner Davis, I'm sorry, had mentioned. You know, prior to your comments, Commissioner Davis, I was on board with voting yes on this. But I think we might even be able to either reduce it further or come up with some kind of a plan to make this an easy package deal for residents. You know, and kind of get the word out a little bit. Commissioner Davis?
Just a comment, as I think we're talking more than just the fee schedule. I think we're talking about neighborhoods developing a sense of place and getting to know their neighbors. And I know there's a big difference between Ms. Bacala's party that she wanted to have at the end of a dead end street and a fraternity party that will take four blocks of Forestry. You know, so there might be varying degrees of block party approvals that we want to go through.
I would agree. And I just wanted to add that there are, I understand that this is something that would potentially add to a budget issue because it's an expense, but we have many carve-outs within our current budget for programs that we see as priorities. And this is pretty small in the grand scheme of things. Commissioner Bonzel, I didn't want to forget that, I'm sorry.
Sure, yeah. And I think that, you know, this is the kind of thing that we should be promoting as the city. And that, I mean, assuming that only two block parties happened, and if we had approved this motion, I mean, you're talking about $300 loss of revenue, so. But regardless, I would like to withdraw my motion, given in light of the discussion that we've had. But I appreciate everybody's feedback, and I'm looking forward to making some progress on this.
So we are, I'm just gonna confirm with the attorney that we are back to the original motion on the floor only?
That is correct, yes.
Protem Hill, you had some discussion?
I have a different issue if that...
Sure, we are now back to general discussion about the motion on the floor, which is the approval of the budget for fiscal year 22. Protem?
Yep, so my question is the status of the College Avenue reconstruction project. In the monthly report, it looked like it was moving forward. It seemed like there was some discussion happening even during the last work session about the status of that project and how it might be able to be pushed off of this year's budget or off the 22 budget into the next year's budget. Could someone provide an update about that?
Sure. So I think that what we see before us for capital, it was proposed in order to, proposed to be a project that we complete. And given the financial status that we are in, it's something that, with the funding that's available, if it's not available, we are not feasible financially, then we are not doing it. The priority that listed that we presented at the last meeting really was talking about Lake Shore Boulevard and simp and college if it's financially feasible. But it is not something that we are looking at. But there's further discussion on the timeline for that, that we are exploring, whether we can push that off to next fiscal year or not. It is currently still in there as a project, but it's the first thing that, unofficially, the first thing that would go. And that includes bonding.
Right, because that was the question, was the financial impact that seemed to have a pretty, it was a million dollars. So what is, did something else get cut to keep college? Because I thought things were contingent on not having that million dollars.
Nothing was removed in order to afford college Ave.
Okay.
If that makes sense. So it's up to the bonding capacity that we do have, if we have that. But if we do not and cannot afford that, then that is essentially the bottom of it, and we will be eliminating that project.
And when would we know about the bonding?
Mary, do you have, do you know that question specifically?
I don't have an answer on that timeline of that yet, but...
Isn't it typically in the spring?
So that's, we're talking about next quarter or
Right.
Second quarter of the fiscal year
Yes.
is when we would actually have that conversation. And we would have a chance to have a conversation about that before it happens?
Yes.
Which is what we did last year, if remember, the vivid conversation where we actually reduced.
Yes.
We kind of met in the middle on a compromise on bonding.
Yeah, just trying to be transparent as we are considering, as we're voting on this, you know, on the budget. So thank you. The, let's see, and the, I guess the only other thing, so on the phase, so the other piece is Phase Two Lake Shore Boulevard, which also seems to be moving forward and being tied to the piece of land next to it? And is that all now inside the budget or for fiscal year 22? Because again, reading the department report, it seemed to say that things were, with the NMU property next door are gonna be included and that work's gonna be done, and that's inside the budget as well? Was that in the budget that we were presented?
Guess I don't understand the question.
Is the NMU property a part of the Lake Shore Boulevard Phase Two?
Is the what?
NMU property, the beach property, the small?
No.
But is that property in the budget for fiscal year 22? I understand it has to be separate from Lake Shore Boulevard, but...
Are you talking about the coastal zone management grant?
Well...
The second project that has to do with Pine and, south of Pine and Wright Street?
Right.
The one that's on the, the one that's referenced on the agenda?
Yeah, that's already budgeted.
Yeah, so I guess it would, rather than referring to the grant, it would be much easier to understand what pieces of land are we talking about? So I thought that there was work to be done on the NMU land as well as the pine, the part that we own. Is that not correct?
There was. And the original grant proposal was for as such. The state made an error in approving that originally. And then we went back and had to amend it with them to remove the NMU property because it had to be city-owned property, and they wouldn't buy our argument of public ownership.
Okay, so there was, okay, so it wasn't, I was remembering something. So I think it would just be helpful, I guess, to get an update on where things stand at the next meeting. And outside of the budget, just where things stand with what work is being done on the waterfront, on that area.
And on that note, and I know you probably have another question, but on item seven under new business, I do believe we're gonna pop a map up on the screen to talk about that section of Lake Shore Boulevard, which I believe you just referenced. So just, I mean, it's not the full picture. I do think a work session is probably to come where we need to talk about the details of the project. But that is forthcoming on this agenda, a little bit of a discussion anyway.
Okay, and so those were my, those were my questions on what's going on with the budget.
Other discussion from the Commission on fiscal year 22 budget? Mr. Bonzel?
Yeah, I also just wanted to, thank you, Madam Mayor, I just wanted to comment that, you know, just so the public is aware, you know, we changed the process by which we do water, sewer, and stormwater utility rate increases this year. So as part of this budget, I believe we are approving, you know, some rate increases for water, sewer, and stormwater essentially. And so I think there's a couple of things that are important to know about that for the public. Number one, those increases are significantly lower than they were per... Number one, those increases are significantly lower than they were projected to have to be like a year or two ago. It's about like 9% for water and sewer and 15% for stormwater. A couple of years ago, we were looking at about 12 and 1/4% for water and about 11.5% for sewer, so that is a significant reduction in the increase. But also, I think, and the city manager sent an email about this earlier as well, that we do need to explore, we will be exploring other options on how to structure future rate increases that we will need to maintain our water infrastructure and keep those, the water, sewer and stormwater funds solvent. So we're doing everything that we can in a difficult situation. Again, the can has kind of landed in our lap, and we're doing everything that we can in moving forward to try and minimize those increases and also make sure that in the future they're structured more equitably so that, for example, you don't have, in my view at least, you know, we don't want to have lower-income residents and the people who use the least water in the city proportionally bearing the biggest burden of these increases. That doesn't seem fair to me, and I also think that we're already, well, I know that we're already seeing evidence that pass rate increases in fiscal '19 and fiscal '20 had significant impacts on the number of shut-off notices and actual shut-offs performed in the city of Marquette for water service, so just something for us to be mindful of.
Is that a true statement?
Pro Tem Hill?
Thank you for raising that really important point, that, I guess I did have one other thing, and it's, it came out of, I attended with Commissioner Davis the Michigan Municipal League meeting last week down in Grand Rapids, and there are tools and advice available from the Michigan Municipal League, of which we're a member, so we would qualify for this, to advise on how to apply for the federal funds that are likely to be coming in the next fiscal year, in addition to the $2 million that we're getting from ARPA. So there's certainly the ARPA money, which we know we're going to get, of $2 million, and then there's potentially other infrastructure money coming, depending on how things vote even this week in Congress. So I was going to bring this up in my comments, but it seems pertinent to bring it up now, which is there may be other, as Commissioner Bonzel said, this budget is austere, but it's, my understanding, doesn't cut any services and, but there will be other opportunities to get additional funds and being ready and able to go after those funds with the support of the Michigan Municipal League and potentially other partners in our community is a very exciting opportunity that we also want to be keeping track of as we go into this fiscal year.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Thank you, Your Honor. We heard some percentages being thrown around about how much the water is going to increase, the water rate increase percentages. I wonder if Mr. O'Neill or perhaps Sean has available what those percentages are for the average family in terms of real money?
So it can refer back to the presentation that we did, so just, just because we, we talked in terms of percentages, only because when you say only a certain dollar amount, necessarily per rate, it does vary based on the, the size, as we know, obviously businesses are, you know, industrial has larger, you know, rates versus an actual household. But when we talk about the average for a two-person household, let's go to four-person, let's go to a family of four, and your monthly charge currently on average is $128.66. The increase with these charges would be $141.11, which is a $12.34 monthly increase or 41 cents per day. And that is something that is stated in the presentation that is on that website, on the utilities webpage as well.
So we're looking for an average household at about 43 cents a day.
Is that just for water though, or was that water, sewer and stormwater?
I do believe that's everything.
That's water, stormwater?
Water, sewer and stormwater.
Okay, thank you.
So we need to keep things in perspective and sometimes we get scared when we hear big percentages and roll that in. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Bonzel?
Yeah, I understand Commissioner Stonehouse's point, I just think that, you know, it's also, we need to be thinking about the fact that we've already increased rates significantly in recent years and that we will have to continue to do so over the next couple of years. So really, I think it's, it's more helpful for us as we're moving forward in these discussions to think about what the cumulative impact on people's monthly budgets is going to be, and also to not rely on just one hypothetical example of what would this hypothetical household pay, but look at what a wide variety of different hypothetical households would pay. So, anyway, but, point taken though, I think that's a fair point.
Other discussion on the budget? We have a motion and a second on the table, I see no further discussion. City Clerk, could we please have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Bonzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Hanley?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Hill?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes. Motion passes 7-0. Up next on our agenda, we have the consent agenda. Commissioners, do we have a motion on consent? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Your Honor, motion to accept the consent agenda is written.
And do we have a second? Commissioner Mayor?
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Any discussion?
None.
All in favor, please say yes.
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 All opposed, please say no. Motion passes 7-0. And we've got several items on unfinished and new business, I was jumping ahead, one item on unfinished business. We've got a budget amendment for our current fiscal year, fiscal year 2021. And City Clerk, could we please have the background on this item?
In order to stay in compliance with state and local laws and regulations, the city should complete each fiscal year with a budget in which actual expenditure amounts do not exceed budgeted amounts. The attached schedules show the activities for which the city budgeted for in fiscal year 2021. Fiscal effect: Approval of the adjustments will help ensure the city stays in compliance with budgetary rules and regulations. Recommendation: Approve the budget adjustment for fiscal year 2021 and authorize the chief financial officer to make the necessary adjustments to balance the budget. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have a motion on the budget adjustment? Commissioner Hanley?
I motion that we approve the budget adjustments for the fiscal year 2021 and authorize the chief financial officer to make the necessary adjustments to balance the budget.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Mayor?
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Mr. Hanley, is there a question? Commissioner Mayor? Any additional discussion from the commission?
I would just like to say, I was asking some questions about this to our city manager, and I have full faith that Mary will do everything to make sure everything is balanced, but I was just checking, we do receive a report as the commission about this in our quarterly report, so that's where we can see how things shuffled out, and we are crossing our fingers and toes, and it sounds like we may end up in the black for fiscal year '21, which is the goal, and that's what this item accomplishes, which is helpful for us for our fiscal year '22 situation. So thank you for your hard work on this, and I just wanted to make those a couple of notes for the public. All right, let's go ahead and take a vote. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes 7-0. New business, first we have a letter of support for a recycling partnership residential curbside recycling cart grant. That's a mouthful. City Clerk, could you please read the background for us?
The city of Marquette has been committed to the advancement of recycling in our community. Over 30 years ago, recycling was introduced to the community using the small green bins. The city has an opportunity to enhance our curbside collection of recyclables through the implementation of recycling carts at either no cost or negligible cost to the city residents through two complimentary grants. If awarded, the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy, Eagle Recycling Infrastructure Grant and the Recycling Partnership Residential Curbside Recycling Cart Grant, the city will be able to accomplish that goal. The timing is right for making this move now that the Marquette County Solid Waste Management Authority, MCSWMA, has made the switch to single-stream recycling and their new materials recovery facility is online. The MCSWMA has the capacity and will be more efficient with added participation. We believe that placing the recycling carts in all single-family homes along with a robust effort to educate our residents will help increase the quality and quantity of recycling. We also believe the carts will help eliminate the blowing litter associated with the open-top bin currently used. Fiscal effect: This grant from the Recycling Partnership is complimentary to the Eagle Recycling Infrastructure Grant. The grants are expected to cover the full amount to purchase, implement and educate residents as part of the program. The contracts for the grants will come back to the city commission for approval at a later date. Any amount not covered will be disclosed at that time. Recommendation: Authorize the mayor to sign a letter of support for the Recycling Partnership Grant. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. Commissioners, do we, I think we may want a little bit of discussion on this, I'm not sure if anyone wants to make a motion on the suspension of the rules. Commissioner Davis?
I move we suspend the rules for discussion.
We have a second. Commissioner Hanley?
I second that.
All in favor, please say yes.
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 All opposed, please say no. Motion passes 7-0 to suspend the rules. We'll start things off with Commissioner Davis.
First, I want to just say that I fully support recycling and the fact that these bins would prevent some of the papers from flying out of the recycle bins, and it, overall, it sounds like a great idea. I just feel I need more information and I have some questions for the staff, and I don't know if you want to answer those or... First of all, who is applying for the grant?
So we are applying for the grant.
The city is.
The city is, and there are two grants that we are essentially applying for, and Commissioner Davis and I had spoken before, so if, if you'd like me to keep going, Commissioner, I will gladly carry on.
Well, I do. Well, I'm interested to know how much these grants are for, what the deadline is, will the bins be required for people to, are going to be choosing to recycle, and what will be the effect on those of us who already have bins? And I'm curious about monthly fees. I think that's all, but I might have more questions.
Great.
She might need you to repeat those.
I don't know if I can remember though.
What we're first referencing is, and I know when I explained in my agenda summary that there are two grants, this is really going to focus on the Eagle Infrastructure Recycling Grant, and the second one that we kind of talked about is a partnership recycling grant, and that partnership actually covers a matching fund. So the Eagle, the Infrastructure Recycling Grant, covers 80% of the grant, and I believe the grant total is about $364,000. So that first part's going to cover about 80%, which is $291,200, give or take, cover the one, yeah, that's right. And then that sister, that partnership grant, we call it the sister grant, is going to cover about $72,800. And if we don't get that first part, which this letter of support is actually a requirement for that first part of that grant, the Eagle Infrastructure Grant, then we will not obviously get the second part, which is that 20% matching grant. So this will essentially, hopefully, cover, the goal is to cover every, a cart for every, and it does reference single-family home, but that is, I believe, qualifying for five units or less. Anybody, that's what we currently have in our contract with waste management for curbside recycling, so that would cover every single household that is eligible for curbside right now, recycling. So the grant, the first part of that grant, so the Eagle Infrastructure Grant, was already something we've submitted some interest in, and essentially this part is what is going to cover that matching part, and that's, kind of goes hand in hand. So this is kind of a second part of that Eagle.
I'm not so sure I heard what you did.
Scott, jump in.
Did you say that we've already applied for the first 80%?
We've already applied and expressed interest in that first part with the Eagle Infrastructure Grant to see if we were even going to qualify for something at this point. Typically, it's my understanding with past practice, we do, we can apply, but when we come, when it comes down to the contract, that comes before the commission to decide if we're going to accept a grant.
Okay.
Scott, did I cover it all?
Correct.
So what about the monthly amount is, that Sally was asking?
You know, I'm, I'm curious because, you know, it's easy to say, let's apply, and then if we get the grant, we'll decide whether or not we want to accept it, but I think there's a real risk for doing that with our reputation with the granting agency, so I just want to make sure that we are, just know what we are, are, are going to be doing. And I guess my other question, Scott, is generally when an organization applies for a grant, they go to their governing body to, to seek approval to apply for the grant, but in this case, they're asking for a letter of support?
Correct, and that's, that's what the grant is asking for, so that the governing body is aware of the grant, that's kind of the way they did it, I guess. But yes, there, there are two parts to it, and Eagle is body for one, and the Recycling Partnership is the body for the other one. We won't accept one without the other, and that was part of the condition when we submit, that if we're not getting both to completely cover the carts, then we won't be accepting any.
Okay, so if, if somebody wants to recycle, they will, they will be required to use the bin?
We'll be going fully to the bins, similar to when, to the carts, sorry, from the bins. The bins where we originally had, I think that was very successful, that's what we put in everybody's hands to, you know, initially start recycling in the community, you know, roughly 30 years ago, a little bit more. And now we're, we're moving to the carts. The carts have shown to be the most effective way and efficient way to collect the recycling, it's shown increases in the volume of single-stream recycling collected utilizing carts, and certainly it'll cut down on the litter having a closed top as opposed to the open top.
Would you anticipate any problems with too many carts around that people don't quite know what to do with, especially if it's a five-unit facility and everyone has a cart? And places for them?
Most have taken the carts, we do have a few that have not taken all the carts, that have gone to the cart system already. Can room be an issue? You know, they take up basically four square feet, approximately two by two is what they really are.
So I understand from our city manager that those who already have a recycle cart will not be needing to pay the monthly fee if this grant comes through?
Correct, if this grant comes through, we will actually own these carts.
Okay.
As opposed to the contract we have now where we're essentially renting the carts. What is, what is the rental now? It's approximately 50-some cents a month for a cart.
Okay, well, that's wonderful news. How, so this would be in perpetuity, that there would be no monthly fee for the cart?
Correct.
Okay.
We would be responsible for repair and replacement, that's something we would budget into the regular rates. So far, we're, we're about three, three and a half years into using carts with the rental program. I think we've replaced maybe half a dozen wheels and two or three lids, so it's been very minimal so far.
Thank you very much, I think I'm done with my questions.
Other commissioners? Commissioner Stonehouse?
How many people right now, percentage, are using the carts?
We are up close to about 40%. We started at about 20%.
All in all, that doesn't sound very significant, considering 60% of the people have decided not to use the carts.
We've been steadily increasing as we've gone. I think a lot of people wanted to wait and see how it went. I mean, we've basically doubled the amount of carts out there since we first started the program, so.
I would look on that as quite a significant shortfall of users. When I have 60% not using a product, I'm trying to sell them and only 40% are, and I'm going to make it mandatory.
I think, you know, the other communities that have implemented... I think, you know, the other communities that have implemented this cart program through the grants have found it to be well-received and successful, I think.
That depends on who you talk in the community, I believe. What concerns me, Your Honor, is making this mandatory. I think the opportunity to provide these carts to folks that want to use them to be great, we should do it. We should do everything we can to increase recycling and increase the program within the city, but I think making it a mandate that you must use it is really an overreach on our part. I think the individual citizen has to have the right and has to have the reason to say, "I want to do this," or "I don't want to do this," and there may be reasons why they don't, but I don't think it's the role of government, Your Honor, to mandate this type of specific action. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Banzel?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just had a quick question. So, just to clarify, so we would be providing these carts for free to all the residences in the city with five units or less. Would that entail a cart per household in that residence? So, for example, like, I live in a fourplex, so would we get, we currently have two carts, actually, two recycling carts. Would we get four, or would we just get one free one from the city?
We basically are given the carts as part of the grant, and we are actually, let me rephrase, we are actually purchasing the grants and then reimbursed for what we give out. The idea was, there's 6,100 roughly units in town, and each unit would be getting a recycling cart.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. And I think, you know, just to respond, I think that, you know, initially, I understand, and initially, it was like, when I was first thinking about this, was sympathetic to the concerns about, oh, well, you know, where is somebody going to put the cart, or, you know, it could be inconvenient for people, but, I mean, we're not requiring that everybody pay the, whatever it is, 50 cents a month, and then whatever upfront cost to get the cart. We're providing them for free, so I do think that makes a difference. Also, our current recycling system is arguably too complicated, and that's part of why it's not working very well, and this is a way to simplify that process and make it much more efficient. I think if we move everyone to the carts, you're going to have many fewer instances of maybe people's recyclables not getting picked up, as well as a reduction in the litter issue, as you mentioned. But I am curious how, so you were saying that in other communities, Marquette Township, and I think Chocley Township, that they've made this switch a little while ago, and I'm curious what, if you could just review what some of the, maybe, community pushback was, or some of the negative thoughts, but then also what some of the benefits have been, and just why we feel that this is a beneficial thing on balance?
Just from talking to people, I think the benefits are kind of what we covered, certainly more efficient and increasing the rates. We have quite a bit of capacity to, you know, bring more material out to the landfill authority for processing in their material recovery facility. I think certainly the litter problem is huge. I mean, that's a regular complaint that we get. You know, the negatives, I think there's a lot of misperceptions out there as to, you know, people feel that they are hard to handle in the snow, and, I mean, I haven't found that to be the case at all. If you shovel your walk or driveway well enough to walk down or drive down, they operate just fine. As far as the space, if you look at the footprint of the current bin, yes, obviously, the carts are much taller. Their capacity is going to be 64 gallons as opposed to approximately 18 gallons, I think the other ones are, but the actual footprint on the ground is not that much different. And, you know, those are, I think those are the biggest things. Like you said, people are sometimes worried about where they're going to storm, or how they're going to operate them, but, you know, you're not required to keep them inside. Certainly with a lid, they'd be just like garbage cans that you would have on your property. Like I said, the footprint's not that much different, so I don't know that there should be that much difference in how you would store them.
Thank you for that review, and I would just say, this is just my own experience. I'm a renter. We've got two carts at our residence, and that, all the renters and the landlords are able to use, and we just store them outside, kind of off to the side on the driveway. They don't get in anybody's way or cause any problems, and not difficult to use in the winter, so, I mean, from my own experience, I would agree with everything that you just said, so, thank you.
Commissioner Hanley?
I do have one point I want to make quickly about the cost. We keep saying it's 55 cents a month for a cart. That is for an additional cart on any package that already exists. If you are doing the green bag system, it's $1.65 a month for the recycling cart, I believe, and then the carts are included in the packages, which average about, the lowest one is $5.70 over the additional green cart or green bag system. I'm looking at the cart system. I just remembered that it was more, I just switched to these this year, so I remembered it was more than that. The other thing I want to point out is, we already mandate for garbage, you either have to use the green bag system or the cart system, so I don't think mandating for recycling is doing that much different than what we're already doing, as far as I'm concerned. I think this is a fantastic system that will be more, that will cause recycling to be more utilized in our area. Though I do have a question, if we switch to this system, how is the glass recycling going to come into play? Because I know we have a lot of issues with that at the moment.
So, the glass collection curbside has not been a very successful endeavor, I don't think anybody would say that it was. We have established a drop-off point at the transfer station on Berega Avenue. We are about half-full with the bin that's there. It's been going for a couple of months now. That's about on pace with the one that's in Chocley, I think, give or take. So, I think as people catch on to that, people will start using that to recycle their glass. I think the positive note is that essentially, it's been a pretty clean product that they've looked at so far, so the product that we're collecting now will actually go to landfill to be recycled, as opposed to, right now, because we haven't been able to really get the separation we need, it's all being processed as single-stream. The glass essentially falls out the bottom and is part of the contamination that's landfilled at the end. Every material that goes through the MRF, there is a certain percentage of that, and typically, it's 10 to 15% that kind of falls out the bottom that doesn't end up being recycled. But as to this date, the City of Marquette has not recycled any of the glass in the last nine months.
Okay, and then one final thing I have to say is, we, can we look at what we're doing with the actual garbage and recycling in the city? I know that my block particularly has had quite a few issues with garbage being strewn along the street in the morning, just not being picked up certain days. They'll be recyclably picked up, but garbage won't be picked up, and then at 10:00 in the morning the next day, maybe they came, but by that point, people have moved their carts off the streets a lot of times. Is there anything to do with getting that a little bit better or a little bit more in line?
Well, first off, we are trying to work with the hauler on that. We realize there have been some issues. One of the most important things is to call in if there is an issue. I know a lot of people don't call in, and then there's no way for us to resolve that issue, as opposed to going out on social media or something like that. We have sent the hauler back for every single call that has come in to take care of the issue. 98% of the time, it's been that day. There have been a few instances where, like you said, they brought the garbage or the recycling back inside, and when they have called, we've taken the address and gone out when they've put it out the next day. So, we are trying to have the hauler rectify all the instances of missed collections.
Perfect, thank you. Pro Tema?
Thank you for all you've done on this issue, because I know it has taken a lot of your time over the last...
Interesting.
Yeah, the back and forth and getting recycling started, and so I just really thank you. You've done a lot to take care of this, and the public should know how much time the staff, city staff have put into this. It's been hours and hours over the years. I just wanted to, I realize, so I'm, I will find room for the cart. Right now, mine sits on a shelf, so that's going to, we'll just have to put, and of course, the garage is not my domain, so somebody else is going to be involved in making that happen, so I'll have to break that to him. But the question, we've been talking about recycling, the recycling carts, will the garbage bags continue, program continue, or also, there going to be required carts for garbage? I got lost in that, I'm afraid.
We're under contract for the next three and a half years approximately, so under that contract, there is a bag system and there is a cart system. As some of you have probably noticed with the bags, there is a shortage of bags out there in the ability to produce the bags. A lot of that has to do with the resources that are used to make the bags. Some of that has had to do with the custom mint-green coloring that we have adopted. You know, a lot of that is taken care of by the cart system, if that's the way it's used to go, but the bag system is still out there, that is still an option, and will be there for the remainder of the contract.
So, three and a half years, so we're looking at 2025?
We're closer to three years now, I guess. We're almost to the new fiscal year, it's closer than...
So, 2024? Something like that, okay, three and a half years.
Twenty-four, yep.
So, if these grants come through, what we can expect is, we still have the option of the green bags, if you can find one, and then you would have, but all of your recycling, which would be paper and plastic, would all just go every week into the bin, and then glass you would take to Berega Avenue.
That's correct. All single-stream would go in the cart, and that would hopefully eliminate some of the issues people are having by missing that one week of recycling to do glass. The amount of glass, the volume, it's just not there, but, you know, with where we're at with society today and COVID and all that type of stuff, the amount of products that people are ordering through the mail and are coming in boxes and other packaging that can be recycled is up tremendously in the last couple of years, so that has actually been a bigger complaint, having to wait that week to put out the rest of their single-stream than we have had complaints about the glass.
Great, thank you for that.
And I just wanted to weigh in that it's my understanding that we're looking at maybe a January-1 date to moving to just having only single-stream recycling and doing the glass drop-off. The last I had heard, that's what we were looking at.
Yes, we...
It's kind of tentative, and we're working those details out.
There will be lengthy communication and multiple forms of communication and education on that.
You'll put your glass out for another month or so, anyway, is my point. Next week, I believe, is Glass Week.
We didn't want to confuse anybody with that just yet, so surprise.
We have the stickers that are out there, so we're going to continue till the end of the stickers.
Till the end of this year, for calendar year.
But we haven't been able to recycle the glass because it's been so contaminated.
That's correct.
So, people could choose to just hold on to it.
So, if you really want to make sure it gets recycled, take it to Berega, I think is what I heard.
That's correct.
Mr. Stonehouse?
What would happen if we just let people vote with their feet? In other words, we make the recycle bins available and encourage people to use them instead of making them mandatory?
Well, that's kind of thought of, I guess, by the makers of the grants, basically to get the 100% that is 100% rollout.
Well, I understand you'll get more people if you, I'm looking at the value of another mandate and really establishing a requirement that, to me, is not the odorous job that we want it to be.
I guess what I was getting at is the reimbursement rate from the grants becomes smaller, depending on the options you give the residents, so if you roll everything out at once, that's how you get the 100%.
Well, I'll tell you, just lost my vote, for what it's worth. Thank you, Your Honor.
Mr. Banzel?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to note real quick that I agree completely with Commissioner Hanley, that I think we need to be continuing to work with and put pressure on waste management. I mean, this is, it's important, and it's good that we're having this in-depth discussion about this right now, because, I mean, like, this is a basic function of government. We've got to make sure the trash gets picked up on time, and, you know, people won't care too much about other things that we're doing if we don't get those basic things right, so I'm glad that we're trying to make our system simpler, more efficient. I want to thank you and staff for being proactive and trying to go and do that. And just want to clarify for folks who may be listening, may be confused, it's just occurring to me that, you know, if we wind back the clock to 2015, when the community suddenly found out that glass wasn't being recycled, this is a very different situation now, right? So, in 2015, we found out that the county Solid Waste Management Authority had just kind of had quietly decided to stop recycling glass that we were sending to them. And now, you know, we brought back curbside glass recycling last year, and we just, you know, despite really, you know, over the last year, I think, making an effort to educate folks, we still haven't gotten people to, you know, to follow the schedule and the system, probably because it's just a little too complicated. And so, I like that we're trying to simplify the system, we're going to the drop-off site that has worked very well in other neighboring communities, and I just think that it's important to make that distinction, that like, when folks are listening to the meeting and they hear, "Oh, the glass hasn't been recycled for nine months," it's not because anybody's deciding not to recycle it, it's because the glass, the glass that residents are giving us is not just glass, and it's too contaminated to use. So, we need to make a change, and I'm glad that we're doing that, so thank you.
Commissioner Davis?
Oh, one last quick clarification. If I don't want to have a bin, I would have the option to bring my materials to the Berega Avenue, and I know that there's a cardboard recycling there, and then there's a glass one. So, if I still want to recycle, but I just don't want a bin, that is an option for residents, is it not?
You could go directly to the transfer station, yes.
Right, okay, thank you, and I'm willing to make a motion if you're ready for one.
I'm ready. Let's go for it, Commissioner Davis.
Do I have to find my... Oh, it's not coming up. Oh, okay.
The recommendation is to authorize the mayor to sign a letter of support.
Okay, I've got it, I've got it. I move, actually, I'm going to change it a little bit. I move to approve the submission of the aforementioned grants and authorize the mayor to sign a letter of support for the Recycling Partnership Grant.
Do we have a second on that motion? Commissioner Mayor?
I'll second that motion, Your Honor.
Discussion, Commissioner Davis?
No discussion.
Commissioner Mayor?
No, Your Honor.
Anyone else? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no.
No.
Motion passes six to one. Thank you, Scott. Okay, we are now on to item number five, City Manager Evaluation. City Clerk, could we please have the background?
The City Charter requires an annual performance evaluation of the city manager. At the August 30th regular meeting, the City Commission directed the mayor to appoint three commissioners to an evaluation subcommittee. The subcommittee consisted of Mayor Smith, Commissioner Hanley, and Commissioner Stonehouse. All commissioners provided feedback regarding the mayor manager's performance so far in her limited tenure in the position, as well as her goals for her first year as required by her employment contract. Recently, the subcommittee met to review the submitted feedback on the city manager's performance, as well as her compensation and first-year goals. The overall evaluation was very positive. The manager is successfully meeting all City Charter requirements for her position, and the city commissioners rated her highly in many performance categories that have been observed in her three months she's been with the City of Marquette. The subcommittee recommends no salary increase at this time because of budgetary constraints imposed on the city by the current economy. Fiscal effect: the city manager's salary of $125,000... Fiscal effect, the city manager's salary of $125,000 per year is included in the fiscal year 2022 budget. Recommendation, approve the city manager's annual performance evaluation and direct the evaluation subcommittee to meet with the city manager to review commission feedback, as well as goals for the coming year. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Thank you.
Commissioners, do we have a motion on this item? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Your Honor, I have motioned to approve the city manager's annual performance evaluation and to direct the evaluation subcommittee to meet with the city manager to review commission feedback, as well as goals for the coming year.
And do we have a second? Mr. Hanley?
I second that motion.
Commissioner Stonehouse, any discussion?
Well, I think the, uh, the outline really talked through it all. We've got a great city manager, we really look forward to the future in working with her, and, uh, again, it's gonna be a good year.
Commissioner Hanley?
I second all of that.
Other commissioners? Any discussion?
All right, um, I would just like to say that, so far, we're doing a wonderful job, Karen, we really appreciate you. And I know we went through, um, a series of goals, and that's something that, um, none of them were surprises. They were all of the heavy-hitting items we've been talking about through strategic planning, through budget, and I know you're laser-focused on those and looking forward to what the next year brings. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's go ahead and take a vote. Commissioners, all in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes seven zero. Item number six, City Attorney Evaluation. City Clerk, could we please have this background?
The city charter requires an annual performance evaluation of the city attorney. At the August 30th regular meeting, the city commission directed the mayor to appoint three commissioners to an evaluation subcommittee. The subcommittee consisted of Mayor Smith, Commissioner Hanley, and Commissioner Stonehouse. All commissioners provided feedback regarding the city attorney's performance so far in her limited, limited tenure in the position, as well as goals for the upcoming year, similar to the city manager. Recently, the subcommittee met to review the submitted feedback on the city attorney's performance, as well as her first year goals. Overall, evaluation was very positive. The city attorney is successfully meeting all city charter requirements for her position. No increase in compensation was considered because this attorney is paid on a retainer basis, and the amount of her compensation for legal services is approved as part of the annual budget process. Fiscal effect, none by this action. Recommendation, approve the city attorney's annual performance evaluation and direct the evaluation subcommittee to meet with the city attorney to review commission feedback, as well as goals for the coming year. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have a motion on this item? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Your Honor, I motion, I motion to approve the city attorney's annual performance evaluation and direct the evaluation subcommittee to meet with the city attorney to review commission feedback, as well as goals for the coming year.
Okay, thank you. And do we have a second? Mr. Bonzel?
I'll second that motion.
Commissioner Stonehouse, any discussion?
Well, our attorney has certainly been providing us with timely and very effective legal counsel, something that we desperate, I don't want to say we desperately need, but we, we do significantly appreciate.
I, I will say, I hope you've been getting that for 15 years, but.
Well, you, you were, you were not sailing in uncharted waters, let's, let's say that. Uh, so we, we certainly look forward to a good and productive year.
Commissioner Bonzel, any discussion?
Uh, no, I, I agree with everything Commissioner Stonehouse said. I think, uh, continuing to do a great job.
Okay, other commissioners? Thank you, Suzanne, looking forward to another year ahead. Appreciate all you do.
With pleasure.
Good. All right, let's go ahead and take a vote. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes seven zero. Now, we are on item number seven, Lake Shore Boulevard Coastal Restoration Professional Services Contract. City Clerk, background, please.
The city of Marquette received grant funding from the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy, Eagle, through the Michigan Coastal Management Program for the design and construction of the southern portion of the Lake Shore Boulevard Restoration Project. This portion of the project is being broken out of the larger Lake Shore Project since the grant requires the work be completed by March 31st, 2022. This work is mainly comprised of habitat restoration. RES is currently part of a design team working for the city of Marquette in partnership with Superior Watershed Partnership on Habitat Restoration on the rest of Lake Shore Boulevard Project to the north of the area. They are familiar with the project area and best suited to complete the required design work. Fiscal effect, sufficient funds for this project are recommend, as recommended, are available through the Eagle Michigan Coastal Management Project Program Grant. Recommendations, approve the selection of RES of West Dundee, Illinois for the professional services related to the Michigan Coastal Management Program Project Area at Lake Shore Boulevard in the amount of $9,600, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the contract. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. This was one I thought maybe we were gonna pull up a map for, but if we'd rather just make a motion and get on with it, I'm fine with that, too. I think I'll look to the commission for what their preference would be. Commissioner Hanley?
I need a motion.
Go ahead.
I motion that we approve the selection of RES of West Dundee, Illinois for professional services related to the Michigan Coastal Management Program Project Area at Lake Shore Boulevard in the amount of $9,600, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the contract.
And do we have a second on that motion? Commissioner Stonehouse?
I'll second, Your Honor.
Mr. Hanley, any discussion?
I don't have any discussion. I can see that these, these funds are available through the grant program, and I think it's a good way to do it, so I think we should go for it.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Only comment, Your Honor, it's a good project, it ties in that south shore of the lake shore, and I think is one that the city is very fortunate to be able to, to, to manage. Thank you.
Other commissioners? Your pro temp help?
So, if it was offered, I would, so, you did go to the trouble of doing this, right?
I do believe so. Do we have that map readily available? It's much clearer than what was included in the, in the project, in the packet.
It was something we discussed when we went through this on Friday, so.
It's coming.
Mainly because I'm a visual kind of a person, and I was having trouble visualizing where this was precisely, but I've since figured it out.
Yes, it's much easier to see it in this maps format than the one that's submitted with the engineering plans. There's a special degree for that, and I do not possess that. There we go. I'm hoping this is a little bit clearer of a visual, so if you do see that there is a red outlined dot, um, around the proposed, um, MCM Coastal Restoration Project, and then, obviously, the other color coding in there is very specific for the type of work that's being done there, um, such as the dune and swale and the coastal wetland restoration part, and then, obviously, that road and, and path relocations in there as well.
So, the, um, right now, that's just sand, most of that, on the lakeside? And, the, um, but, uh, people are parking on this, on Pine Street quite a bit to have access to the lake? Are we gonna continue to allow that to happen?
Yes, and it's gonna be more managed.
Okay, 'cause that is, since we don't allow parking on Lake Shore Boulevard, that area has, um, quite a bit, I mean, there's six cars there on a busy summer day. Um, okay, and, so when you say more managed, will there be, uh, an actual parking surface, or do you know yet?
Uh, that, that will be with the roadway itself. This grant was part of, um, actually, a success story, where we were able to find some funding for the entire Lake Shore Boulevard Project on the southern end. But because we have to get an extension on the, on the north end because of the permits, and this grant is a separate grant with a deadline, we have to break it out and do it now. And this is basically just coastal restoration, uh, dune and swale, all the stuff that was in the, the other plan there, and some plantings, and then also doing a connection, uh, of an overflow area into that coastal forest to the south to handle stormwater.
And the, and the construction, again, is this fall or next spring? Sorry.
This thing is really challenging.
I do believe it was supposed to be done earlier.
Um, yeah, the intent is to, is to have it done this fall.
Great, thank you.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Bonzel?
Uh, yeah, and thank you for pulling up the map, um, and thanks for that information, Dennis. I just had a clarifying question, uh, maybe this can, this will only be answered when we have the, uh, actual design provided to us, but, on the north end of this property, you can see there's the riprap, which we know is a problem, 'cause it drives sand further out away from the la, or from the lake shore, um, when water reflects. And then, further south, there's the sand beach that's experienced significant erosion recently. So are we, it doesn't really show on the diagram, are we gonna have some more of that kind of like Pebble Beach kind of concept, like we have further north?
Yeah, actually, the, east of this grant boundary, there's still gonna be a little bit of work done there as part of Phase Two. It's just that, because of the grant, we had to break this boundary out and complete it now, because the other stuff won't be done till next year. So, long story short, yes, we're gonna extend a few things down south.
Okay, thanks, I appreciate that.
Any additional discussion on this item? All right, let's go ahead and take a vote. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes seven zero. Onto our last new business item, number eight, request to waive the minimum size for planned unit development. City Clerk, background, please.
The Marquette County Land Bank Authority and, and Inova Lab Development Group submitted an application for concept approval of a proposed planned unit development, PUD, consisting of two duplex townhouse buildings at 1025 Osprey Court, and also requested that a waiver to establish the PUD on a parcel that is less than two acres in size. This site was originally approved as a portion of the Hawks Ridge PUD, with a building on site with up to 12 dwelling units being approved. But that phase of the project was not developed, and the PUD approval expired more than a decade ago. On September 7th, 2021, the Planning Commission held a public hearing to consider the PUD qualification application and a waiver request for the minimum size for a PUD. The Planning Commission found the proposal met enough criteria for eligibility to establish a PUD and recommended that the waiver be approved. It was moved by S. Middlefelt, seconded by M. Dunn, and carried four to one that after conducting a public hearing and reviewing of the applicant's concepts of middle and request for consideration of project qualification, qualifications documents, and the staff file report analysis for O dash, O1 dash PUD dash O9 dash 21, the Planning Commission recommends that the city commission waives the PUD size requirements. Fiscal effect, none. Recommendation, concur with the Planning Commission and waive the two-acre minimum size requirements for the 1025 Osprey Court Planned Unit Development Proposal. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Thank you. All right, commissioners, do we have a motion on this item? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Your Honor, I concur with the Planning Commission and motion to waive the two-acre minimum size for the 1025 Osprey Court Planned Unit Development Proposal.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Commissioner Mayor?
I'll second the motion.
Commissioner Stonehouse, any discussion?
I think it's an excellent use of a very small piece of property, and certainly would really be a step, a small step, though it is, towards more affordable housing.
Commissioner Mayor?
I would agree with that, and I personally don't see any issue with moving forward with this.
Any other commissioners? Mr. Bonzel?
Yeah, I would agree with, uh, what Commissioners Mayor and Stonehouse stated, and just a, you know, a little bit of background, you know, to my knowledge, this property, um, was essentially, you know, went into tax foreclosure after the housing crisis and recession after this original PUD for the entire site was approved. Um, and that the county land bank has essentially been sitting on it, trying to sell it, trying to redevelop it, for the better part of a decade now, if not longer, and nothing has materialized. So, regardless, it's great that the site is being redeveloped, um, as opposed to just sitting there. And I think it's exciting that the county land bank is working with the state land bank and Inova Lab, who have a lot of expertise in workforce housing development, to try and get some of that workforce housing, where we're talking about that, or that middle-income housing that'll be more affordable for residents in the community. So, I'm very excited about this. Could be a great, even though it's only four units, it could be a great case study for other places in the city of Marquette.
Any other discussion? I would just like to echo the comments that have been said so far. It's nice to have something on the agenda, small though it may be, that does work towards our strategic planning goals for this year. So us being able to make a modification to a minimum size for planned unit development, although that may seem like a, you know, bureaucratic paperwork-type thing, it is assisting in, in our strategic goals, and I appreciate that, so. Thanks for giving us a win today, Karen. All right, and other, other, other wins, too, but that one felt like a really bright-shining star. All right, uh, let's go ahead and take a vote. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes seven zero. Brings us to public comment. Public comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Please state your name and physical address. If you'd like to make a public comment, go ahead and approach the podium. Go ahead, come on up. Name and physical address, please.
Uh, good evening, commissioners. Uh, my name's Dave Allen, I'm the director, president of Inova Lab. I figure since I drove six and a half hours, I might as well say something. We are really excited to partner with the land bank, not only on this project, but several projects around, around the county. Uh, we're working real hard with Ann, and I just, it would be very remiss if I didn't give Ann a lot of praise. I don't think you can even fathom the amount of work she did to get this property, to get the title cleared, to get it removed from the condo association. Uh, rest assured, we, this is gonna be a condo development, so it's gonna participate with the road and the common maintenance and all the other things with that condo, so we want to be a good neighbor. Um, we hope to have these four units set on their foundation in May. Uh, they'll all be set in one day, so there will be just one day of disruption. Um, and then, once they're set, uh, the units will be finished within 60 days and be sold. So, uh, we're working on a lot of infill on some single-family lots with Ann, both in Marquette and outside Marquette, and, um, happy to report to you that, as we continue this work, the price point on those 1300 to 1500 square foot three-bedroom houses will be less than 200,000, which is really important, I think, for the city and for the county. So, we're, that's what Inova Lab does, we're, we're a for-profit company, but we work with governments, nonprofits, we're working with land banks around the state in this very, in this very type of work. And we're excited, lastly, that we're developing a team here in the UP to handle all the UP work, so I don't have to keep driving up. So, it will be local contractors, local, uh, local economy that will benefit from this. So, thank you for your approval tonight, and I hope we'll make you proud. Thanks.
Thank you, Dave. Anyone else for public comment? Seeing no one else for public comment, public comment is now closed. That brings us to comments from the commission. We'll start things off with Commissioner Mayor, and then go down the line alphabetically. Go ahead.
No, I don't think I honestly have any comments tonight. I'm just gonna yield.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Boy, never miss a chance to say something.
Too late.
Two quick items, I did manage, did not, I, I did get my third shot, my booster shot. I followed in that category of people that, that are eligible to get it, and I encourage everyone else that falls in the same category I do, get the shot. It certainly can do no harm, and certainly can do a great deal of good, so I encourage everyone to please do so. The Northern Homecoming this week, uh, so, keep your eyes open a little bit for more Northern alumni wandering around the streets, be careful of them, and be, be considerate of them, and kind of point them in the right direction, but, uh, certainly a good time and a big time for the university. Thank you, Your Honor.
Mr. Bonzel?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I'll also be brief, um, but just wanted to, uh, thank, uh, David Allen from Inova Lab for coming up, um, and also for, you know, his, uh, firm's involvement in the Osprey Court Project. I am really excited, I think it could be, it's really exciting to hear that they, that you all did manage to get the price point down under 200,000 in that workforce housing range. And I just want to, also, now that you're here in person, I don't know if we've ever actually met in person, but, uh, uh, Dave was also one of the folks, the statewide experts on housing who advised the Ad Hoc Housing Committee, um, and on some of the things that they did in Grand Rapids, um, the, the city government, Grand Rapids, did to try and get some more affordable and workforce housing down there. So, I'm excited to see what possibilities, you know, we may have in the future, but this, this project is a great example of. project is a great example of what we need more of in Marquette right now. So, other than that, I don't think I have anything specific. So, thanks, everybody, for some great discussion tonight.
Commissioner Davis?
Yep, I will join Commissioner Bonzo in saying, thank you, Dave. It's really good to have you here in Inova Lab. I'll get it, and I'll practice that. And it was real good to hear your description, a three-bedroom with less than $200,000 is going to be really nice to have. I am just a day behind Commissioner Stonehouse. I'll get my booster shot tomorrow, and I'm pretty excited about being in that category. And finally, last week, as Pro Tem Hill talked about, she and I went to the Michigan Municipal League Conference, and it was a very good event for, especially, Commissioner's only been here for a year and a half, to have that in-person discussion with other cities and learn from a lot of the other experts, and very well worth my personal investment. So, just wanted to let you know that I was there, learning, and appreciated that they actually have such a good conference. Thank you.
Commissioner Hanley?
I will be very brief as well. I would like to thank Dave and Inova Lab again. This is an exciting thing, and I believe you said that the houses that were three-bedroom would be about 1,300 square feet or below?
The future ones.
The future ones, yep, and that's fantastic for size-wise. So, I'm very excited to see where this goes and how we can work with you as a city to continue to get our workforce housing up in the area. All right, thank you.
Pro Tem Hill?
Yeah, thank you, and I also hope that we can talk about multifamily housing coming. Is that something that your organization works on as well, or?
On behalf of, we have several private landowners that own land in Marquette that have come to me asking for some multifamily plans on land that they own for, for some workability.
Good, that's what I, good, that's exactly what I was hoping to hear. Thank you. So glad that we have that opportunity here. I wanted to, two things, good news, bad news, I guess. Bad news first, I'm continuing to hear concern from community residents about the construction at Two Marquette Place. I had a commissioner, or I had a citizen see me in my car, waved me over, and talked to me for 20 minutes about it this weekend. So, there is, continues to be a lot of concern that during construction, a vital route is being closed at a time, you know, the biking and walking is much less available, and while folks seem to understand and don't seem to mind so much about what's happening right on the lake shore, understanding that that project is going to be great and it's worth that, but the real significant concerns, and I hear about this regularly, about what's going on with Two Marquette Place taking over a sidewalk and people not having access, and that the alternative route is quite dangerous and not, doesn't feel safe, particularly for folks with kids. I've heard that from multiple people. Want to let people know that you're heard and make sure that people understand that those concerns are being conveyed. And I hope that we can find ways to improve that experience in the time that we have left. And then, I just wanted, since I was, I was designated as the official vote for the Michigan Municipal League on their priorities, I just thought I would list them off at the high level to let folks know what the Michigan Municipal League is working towards for the entire state through its villages and municipalities and cities. And the number one is community wealth building, and then there's also physical design and walkability, environmental sustainability, municipal finance and services, infrastructure, entrepreneurship, trust and belonging, education and lifelong learning, public health, and cultural economic development. And I, that, when we bring all those things together, and we as municipal government, being the last and arguably the most important purveyor of services, are working to make all those things happen for our communities, we are doing what we, what you elected us to do, and it was an honor to get to vote, to say that we support these kinds of actions, and I look forward to us continuing to do that in the next year.
I've got two items for tonight. So, first of all, I wanted to say thank you to our city manager, our department head, city staff, for your hard work on the fiscal year 22 budget. I know that that was a Herculean effort, it was all hands on deck, creative thinking, and that will continue, because I know there are some pieces that we're hoping to pursue for the future, and I just wanted to thank you for all your time, blood, sweat, and tears poured into that. That was a surprise that none of us really wanted to deal with, but you handled it very well. Thank you. I'm also holding out some hope that maybe things won't be as bad as we've predicted, and that there'll be some silver linings for fiscal year 22 yet to come, so we'll make a wish on that. And then, one question I had, the water, sewer, stormwater rate increases, when will those take effect for residents and businesses and folks who pay those bills?
Mary, can you confirm that, Mary?
Should be for services beginning October 1.
So, yep, so your bill that covers for services that are utilized as of 10/1.
So, typically, folks would get that bill like November 1 and beyond? It's like a month build, it's like behind, right? Does that sound right-ish?
Good estimate, yes.
Okay, so sometime in, I don't know, five to seven weeks, you'll get a higher bill-ish?
Yes, I think so.
Okay, not immediate, but also not real delayed, so it's coming. It was just something that, that was always something that was a little murky to me as to when that actually took effect, so this is going to take effect for billing for October 1. Thank you for that. All right, that's all I had. Brings us to comments from our city manager.
Well, so, you know, you did thank the staff and myself. Thank you very much for that, but really, the thank you is to the commission and our, yeah, obviously, our staff and department heads as well, but thank you for the, you know, very open conversations. It's not always easy to come to the commission with not-so-bright-and-sunshiny. It's difficult, but it was met with ideas and solutions and a lot of hard work that wouldn't have been possible had you not been so open and receptive to a message and to come with some solutions, so I thank you for that. Just a couple of reminders that for this week, coming up on October 3rd is Fire Prevention Week, and there is a kickoff parade starting on October 2nd at 11 o'clock on Bluff Street, right behind Harlow Park on Washington Street, right there. So, we invite everybody to come out and kick off Fire Prevention Week, and, you know, it's something that is very near and dear to my heart from where I came from and also from my family, so please, please make sure you take advantage of that. And as it goes for the construction complaints, I wanted to say that Commissioner Davis had reached out to me last week, and I apologize for not getting back to you, I have been ill, but that is something we are consistently evaluating and looking at, and I think perhaps an update to the commission this week on some of those complaints is due, so why don't we get that out for all of you? And lastly, thank you very much for a smooth evaluation process and goal-setting process. Goal-setting is not always very fun and enjoyable, but I like where we're headed, and the goals that are set are challenging, but they are very much something that I feel very passionately about, so I'm looking forward to this next year and continuing this conversation as we go. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we are adjourned at 7:34 PM. Thanks, everyone.